Good evening, everyone. This calls to order the committee as a whole hearing of Baltimore City Council to hear, in coordination, City Council Bill 21-172, City Council Bill 21-173, and City Council 21-174. Today marks our sixth hearing on this particular bill. Obviously, this issue has been of concern to the council and a major concern to residents around the city. And that's why, you know, we try to be as transparent as well as robust in providing information and developing dialogue, not only amongst the council but with the administration and with the collective community as a whole. At this time, I would like to recognize, in no particular order, just the order of my screen, Councilman John Bullock, Chairman Mark Foneway, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Chairwoman Danielle McCray, Chairman Eric Costello, Councilmember James Torrance, Councilmember Christopher Burnett, Chairman Robert Stokes, Councilmember Ryan Dorsey. And I believe that is it for all members on the and Chairman Yitzhak Rabin. On the bridge, we have our facilitator of today, our host, Mr. Director Larry Gibson of Department of Legislative Services. We also have, again, in no particular order, oh, we have our amazing comptroller, Bill Henry. He's going to provide testimony to us tonight. From the administration, in no particular order, we have Madam Commissioner Alice Kennedy from Law Department. We have Ms. Elena DePietro, as well as Mr. Victor Tervela. We also have on the bridge, from Finance, Mara James, Mia Themelis from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, Director Shamaya Kearney from the Recovery Office, and Stephanie Murdock of the Housing Community Development. From the Council President's office, we have the General Counsel of the City Council office, which is Mr. Aaron DeGraffin-Right. We have Nikki Thompson, Director Thompson, Director Matt Stegman, Nathan Poole, Lucy Faunt. And I believe that's it from the Council President's office. And I believe that's everyone. So if I did not say a name, I apologize. I believe I got every single window that is up. But to just recap, again, this is our seventh meeting to kind of go over this. I think it's been a healthy discussion. I think that in the last hearing, we went over some amendments. Ultimately, the amendments have been sitting out there for a couple of weeks now. We're going to look to vote them out today. But it's also going to be an opportunity for, again, our comptroller to present to us. He hasn't had an opportunity in the past, but his office has been engaged and participated in all of the hearings thus far. We also have, are going to hear from the Law Department on some of their recommendations and updates. They've made a lot of really important technical amendments and updates to date. They're going to kind of go over and cover them for us today. And then any other members that would like to bring forth any additional amendments today won't be an opportunity to vote on them, but will be an opportunity for you to kind of communicate and go over those amendments for us to vote at a subsequent hearing time. So with that said, I'm going to go to our comptroller. Well, before we go to our comptroller, no, I'll go to our comptrollers first, and then we'll come to the Law Department. The Law Department can cover whatever recommendations that they have and some of the technical changes that they thought were important to put into the bill. So, Mr. Comptroller, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to clear the field before you begin to deal with the Law Department. I'm glad to watch that at an even greater distance. Honorable Councilmembers, the Department of Real Estate under my office is mandated by city charter with responsibility for the acquisition and disposition of city-owned real estate. That being said, as discussed with several of you individually, several other agencies have developed their own portfolios over the years. Real estate's portfolio now is significantly smaller than DHCDs, for instance. Our portfolio of approximately 1,300 properties consists mostly of vacant parcels of land with very few buildings. In conversation with the bill sponsor, the Council President, we went and tried to do a cursory survey of the lots we already have. Roughly 70% of our portfolio is owned residential, mostly in our six or our eight zoning districts. And currently, we sell between 10 and 20 parcels each year. So as far as fiscal notes go for City Council Bill 21-0172, our estimate is that real estate would need approximately $125,000, mostly the salary and OPCs for an additional staff person to support the legislative mandate put forth by this bill, which would significantly incentivize the purchasing of city-owned lots for homeownership and increase the number of annual sales. In general, we believe that the city would benefit from all increased marketing efforts to support moving more city-owned property back onto the tax rolls. And we hope 21-0172 can be part of the solution. So we should, wherever possible and equitable, help to transition property that the city does not need to parties' intent on reinvesting in our city and putting those properties back into use. After discussions within the agency with the bill sponsor and with the Department of Housing and Community Development, we have drafted a package of amendments for the council's consideration. But DLR won't have them available for the council's consideration until your Wednesday session. So I just wanted to get this part out of the way now and also share in concept an amendment that is actually for 210173, where I'm going to propose raising the size of the proposed supporting grants from a maximum of $25,000 to a maximum of $50,000. As the Council President and I previously discussed, it's simply a matter of trying to widen the pool. That the more money that the city is able to put into these supporting grants, that increases the number of potential projects that could pencil out, where the cost of fixing up a vacant bladed house or building new construction on a vacant lot is not one where private financing alone is enough to pay for the cost of doing that work. If the city can provide the additional grant needed, the additional subsidy needed to make that project make financial sense, the larger the grant we can offer, the more projects that will be available and the more transformative this new program can be in the neighborhoods where it's working. And, Mr. President, I'm available for questions from the council if they're on.
No, and I would like to publicly thank you, Mr. Comptroller, for, one, sitting down with myself and my team. But more importantly, two, the thoroughness in which you went over the bill to understand and know how important it is to the council and for you to take time out to provide not only the current hat that you wear, but some background and other hats that you used to wear. It was truly refreshing and we really, really appreciate it. At this point, are there any questions or concerns for our comptroller? As discussed, he will present some amendments. We will have them in writing on our next hearing. But he wanted to come on today just to kind of let you know the methodology in which he used to kind of come up with them and where his head is directed as it relates to helping us amend the bill. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question. I'm curious from my predecessor. How do we come up with the idea of raising it to 50? Is there any methodology for that, understanding the average size of cost? Or you just thought more would be better? I'm just curious.
It was actually the last two of those. But let me begin by saying, oh, councilman, my councilman. Yeah, that it and I think maybe the Council President will recall when we were discussing this. I remember when working in community development, I worked for Patterson Park Community Development Corporation back in the early 2000s. And it was not uncommon then for us to look for more than $25,000 worth of subsidy for a given house. Now, I know that there's, you know, a lot of different variables in play. There's, you know, cost now versus cost then. There's the kind of product that we were, you know, we were deliberately trying to to provide a an over-rehabbed product, I guess, if you could. If you could describe it as a way to encourage people to come and live somewhere that where they could afford to live in a trendier, you know, more popular at the time area. And so we kind of over-improved our properties. But given that we are talking now about 15 years later and as someone who's recently had a little work done in the house, I have some sense of how some prices have changed in the last 15 years. So I just, I said to the Council President, unless there was a reason why it needed to be held below this $25,000 threshold, as long as the whole, the construction of this is, no pun intended, is that these grants are up to. So, you know, currently, it's up to $25,000. This would just be raising that upper threshold to $50,000. If it turns out that somebody comes in with a project where they need $20,000, they're only going to get cleared for $20,000. But if they come in with a project that is $28,000 or $29,000 or $32,000, I wouldn't want to see, and I would hope nobody here would want to see somebody miss out on the opportunity to finally, you know, achieve the dream of homeownership because the house that they've picked out to try to reinvest in is going to take a little bit more than the threshold that the city's program allows. Now, I know that technically that will be the case, no matter where we draw that line. So that's why I'm proposing it simply as a, let's just try to make the pool bigger. I know we're not going to get everybody. It's not going to make every house doable, but it'll make more houses doable than 25. So if we can afford it, let's do it.
Are there any additional questions or concerns? And speaking with comptroller Henry, we kind of teetered on between 50 and 25 when we were developing the bill. And Director Thompson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was Detroit that kind of settled on 25 when they rolled out the program with the administration and their mayor. I think we just, and they're being our sister city with House America. You know, we were already developing the policy. We just kind of threw the 25 in there. But as soon as comptroller Henry started to talk about, hey, we need to increase it. Let's increase the size of the pool of potential houses. Because, you know, of course, the higher you go as it relates to the construction costs that you're going to subsidize, the larger the amount of portfolio that folks will have to pick and choose from based off of their AMI. So it made total sense. And, you know, at this point, until I see it, I'll say we accept it as a friendly amendment, but the comptroller is going to provide and we'll have it on Wednesday. Are there any other questions or concerns for Mr. Comptroller?
None at this time. I will tell you, that one.
Mr. Comptroller, you're on the hot seat. It's for us to ask you questions.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just going to say when you said, until you see it, you'll accept it as a friendly amendment. I can guarantee you right now, it's crossing $25,000 and writing in 50. That one's not very complex.
We know, even the bill sponsors are here smiling. We know that it's going to be pretty straightforward. And like I said, I accept it as a friendly amendment. But are there any other questions for Mr. Comptroller? I'm not sure if he can stay around the whole time or not. You guys sure are no questions or concerns? All right, well, Mr. Comptroller, you're happy to hang out with us. Or if you need to leave, you can leave and we'll fill you in on anything that comes out of this meeting.
I can probably say just until the Law Department starts their presentation. And then I suspect at that point, I'll need to go to another urgent meeting.
Thank you for that, Mr. Comptroller. At this point, we will turn it over to, I'm not sure, Elena or Victor. I know that you guys had some technical amendments that you wanted to kind of cover and go over with us. Many of the ones that we talked about already last week. But just to refresh everybody, to keep everybody on the same page, if you guys could go over whatever recommendations that you have. So we're all on the same page.
I think Victor will start out because he has 172, so we'll go in order.
Right. So we'd talk about the four amendments that we have, and three of those are technical. The last one, we've sort of revamped, and I wanted to talk about that more than I wanted to talk about the others. But I'll let me go through all of them. The first one, as I said, is a technical amendment. And I, this is something that, we are amending your amendments, Mr. President. So, and we, and I think you should have a sheet. Everybody should have a sheet on there about what our amendments are doing. We are down, our first amendment is on number four, amendment number four on page seven. And what that is, is that in your current proposal, Mr. President, you had a residency dealing with incarceration. And that's no longer relevant because we're taking out the time limit for, under what circumstances, somebody has to be, is eligible for this program. So that is just simply catching up with the idea that we no longer have durational residency requirements. That is what we have on amendment number four on page seven. Then we skip to amendment number seven. And there, essentially, we are, we, the Law Department was focused on the idea that at the end of the day, the city council can't establish the, either the lease rate of property or the sale price of property. And so amendment number seven strikes, the language is there, it says that at cost, you're basically renting the property for the cost of $1 a year. We say, we substitute that with saying a lease rate set by the department. That would be HCD. And the similar, we've got similar type of amendment in amendment number eight, where they talk about the sale price. And originally, the sale price was basically more or less established by the department, by the piece of legislation. And we have proposed the ownership of the property is going to be set by a sale price established by the department. So as I said, those three are sort of technical. The last one is a little bit, let me explain the last one. We sort of played with your concept. Your original amendment had a lien. If someone doesn't stay in the property for 10 years, you had a lien on the property and it was going to be worth, if they want to get out of that lien, it was going to be worth some amount of penalty money. At that point, we saw that the lien at some point, at least when they sold the property, was going to be placed on the buyer. And we thought that was going to be a problem. So you needed to do it with the seller. But then we captured, we sort of revised this whole thing and said, and what we have today under amendment number nine, it said that if someone doesn't hold on the property for 10 years, they will, there will, when they actually buy the property, there will be a deed that says that you need to hold on to the property for 10 years or there is a right of reversion. That is essentially the city can take back the property. But if you want to get away from that option of the city exercising a right of reversion, the owner of the property can pay a penalty. And the penalty is pretty much the one you said originally, Mr. President. Basically, if you can pay $25,000 if you rent the property or you can pay the net sale price. And you had a definition of net sale price. We pretty much kept that. We didn't change that. The only, the last thing, the last provision that we have is that the right of reversion that exists when we, when you buy the property, when you take the property, that automatically goes away after 10 years. So essentially, it's holding on to everything you had in your original draft, except we've given it a right of reversion, which we thought would be a better way of handling this option. And but we would assume that people wouldn't take that option. They would pay the penalty and not have the entire property revert back to the city. So that's pretty much what we have on 172.
At this point, are there any questions from members of the council for the Law Department on 172? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you for all your work, Victor. Do you have additional ones for 73 and 74? Or is that Elena?
That's Elena.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Victor. Amanda Pietro, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chair, members of the committee and the council as a whole. I was reviewing the Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program, City Council Bill 21-0173. And I have only really minimal amendments to that bill. An important one, but if you go to section 65F, there was, like Victor's bill, there was a continuing residency requirement that was attached to that. And we couldn't approve that. So an amendment was offered that they must maintain the property as their primary residence for following, for five years following receipt of the program funds or repay the funds due to the program. So that's different because it's saying, it has to be their primary residence as opposed to the language that would imply more of a residency requirement that in the city as opposed to in the property. So we feel that that's going to be more palatable. And that's it for this law department's review of that bill. I can talk as well about 174, which was reviewed by Ashley Brown in our office, who's able to be here tonight whenever you're ready.
Mr. President, I think we only got the amendments for 72. I don't see the other two.
Can we make sure that all members have it?
Thank you.
If we could ensure that, I guess, Nina from Government Relations has it as well. So she can ensure that the administration has it. What we'll do is, just in order of fairness and transparency, we will hold that 173 over. I think it's pretty straightforward, but we'll hold it over to our next hearing that way you guys have an opportunity to digest it. It'll also be in combination with what the comptroller brings back on 173 as well. So it just kind of makes sense to talk about them in tandem and we'll move forward. So before we move forward past this point, are there any additional questions or concerns for members of the council regarding 173? Hearing and seeing none. I believe, Elena, there is nothing new for 174 yet. Is that right?
Sorry, say that again. I can hear you.
174, I forget. Someone else was working on it. Nothing to talk about today, right?
There should be, I have, I received the amendments. So I know they exist. But that's a fairly straightforward amendment as well.
Yeah, if you could talk through 174 real quick, Elena. And again, we'll send them out. And we just won't take out 174 until Wednesday.
Well, in 174, we were concerned about the lack of guidance and standards for exercising the discretion of the, in terms of awarding these grants. So let me get to the actual amendments here because I have somebody else up for a moment. Bear with me. I'll get the 174 amendment up. Okay, so on page three, the amendment would strike line 27 in its entirety, which was basically the department shall consider these criteria. Whereas we said, really, no, that's not a limit on the discretion of the, it allows too much discretion on the part of the department giving it to somebody else. So we said that that criteria had to be mandatory. So they must consider this criteria in order to prevent an illegal delegation of legislative authority to the department. So that is basically it for 74.
Thank you, Mr. Pietro. At this point, are there any questions or concerns for the Law Department? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any new amendments or questions or concerns members have just in general? They would like to present at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Green, we're going to start to vote on the initial amendments. So Director Thompson.
Mr. President, I'm very sorry. On page one of the Law Department amendments has medical debt totaling XXX or more. Is there a reason that there's no amount in there?
Councilwoman Ramos, to your question, we have yet to work that out with DHCD or DLR about what amount we'd want to put in. We've had some preliminary conversations based off of data that we've seen about how race and gender plays into what numbers we would choose. And so once we come to some type of agreement on what's a good number, we'll circle back with that. We had amendments drafted, but since we didn't get them to everyone before this meeting, we plan to bring that back at the third, on the hearing on the second, sorry.
And to that point, I think we're going to hold on. We're holding on to two and four. Is that right, Director Thompson?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Sorry for not clarifying that for you, Councilwoman Ramos. Are there any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, Director Thompson, if you could just kind of announce the amendment and then I'll call for motion. And then, once we get it properly moved in second, Mr. Director Green, if you could take the role.
Yes, sir.
So the First Amendment, Director Thompson.
I'm going to begin with 172. And the First Amendment would be the First Amendment is to, on page one in line two, to strike legacy residents. And on page two, after line two, insert in the preamble, whereas in the late 1950s and 1960s, Baltimore City accumulated clusters of vacant homes due to plans to expand the highway, which led to the infamous Highway to Nowhere and eminent domain process that disproportionately disrupted Black working-class families. Whereas the city was able to use this continuous inventory of vacant properties to create the original Dollar Homes program in the 1970s, where Baltimore City residents had the opportunity to purchase and rehabilitate these properties for a dollar a year over a period of two years. And it is the intent of this ordinance to resurrect this program. And this is based off of pretty much the suggestions that we got from the Law Department to tighten up our line of analysis between why we are doing this program and using the funding that we are suggesting.
At this point, are there any questions or concerns on this amendment?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just, should we have a packet of all of the amendments in one place with them all numbered? All of the amendments that are going to be offered?
So we have them. Yeah, so we're going to, on 172, you have a list of all of the amendments so far. We're not voting out the bill today. So there's still opportunities for members to bring amendments. I believe you're on, but the comptroller had some suggestions for some amendments on 173 and as well as the Law Department. And I believe some of your colleagues are also working on amendments. So if the question is, do we have all amendments in totality? No, we're voting out the amendments that we've been talking about for the past two or three weeks today.
So my question is, do we have them all consolidated in one place?
Oh, absolutely.
I don't see where I have them.
There's that one document that we sent around, particularly as it relates to 172. I think there's a total of nine amendments on there. That's what Councilwoman Ramos was referring to earlier about her question regarding the medical bills. So you should have that, I believe it's like eight or nine pages. Do you have that, Councilman Dorsey?
I'm looking through. I'm looking through my inbox for it.
If not, we'll put it to the top of your inbox. Director Thompson, if you could send it to Councilwoman Dorsey real quick. Are there any other members who does not have that document we've been going through? If not, we'll make sure we send it out to you, and make sure everybody has it. All right, yeah, so Councilman Dorsey, we'll make sure you have it. And then, once you have it, if you could just give us the thumbs up. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I saw the thumbs up. So at this point, for amendment number one, 172, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve this amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. I know some of the, I guess you guys are reading over the amendment. Provided ample time for, I guess, Councilman Dorsey as well. Is there a second for this motion?
Mr. President, this is, this is in the document that Larry Green sent at 4:38 PM, is that correct?
Yeah, it's like eight or nine pages.
A PDF, it was Director Thompson had sent it to Director Green. It's four pages.
The one I'm working off of is a total of eight pages.
Can you, can you please send that out, Mr. President? That'd be, because I think I was working from a different document.
Director Thompson, do you know the document that Chairman Costello is referring to?
Yes, so to clarify, I think what seems to be the confusion is the first draft of amendments that we discussed last week, in last week's hearings, were sent on February 16th, and were sent with a full reprint of those amendments. Those are the ones that we are discussing currently. The law department, from our last committee of the whole hearing, provided some additional technical amendments specifically around the parole and probation language, and then provided updates, which we sent around this afternoon, Chair Costello, which is the document that you're referring to. So in order to avoid confusion, we did share the law department's updated amendments, but we are working from the original documents that we sent on the 16th, which is the eight pages that Council President Mosby has. So I'll be happy to send both, so that you can, you should have both already, but I will send both.
Thank you, Director. Is that the unofficial reprints of 172, 73, and 74?
Yes, yes, exactly.
But that doesn't have, that's not the amendments, that's just the interlineated version, correct?
And it does include the amendments.
Like if you read the first one that she discovered, it goes right over striking, I believe, legacy residents and
And isn't, Mr. President, isn't that in the four-page one that Councilman Costello had mentioned?
Yeah, this one.
I was following, yeah, I was following that as Nikki was reading it. So it is on that, at the top of the four-page document.
Councilwoman, Chairman Costello, are you okay, or do you need?
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So the the document that Director Thompson is referring to, the email that she's referred, that Director Thompson, sorry, the email that you're referring to that was sent out on February 16th at 5:08 PM is three documents. That email includes three attachments. There, the attachments are interlineated versions of bills 172, 173, and 174. There does not appear to be a list of amendments, so it is unclear. I think that's where the awkward silence is coming from. It's unclear what the specific amendment is that we're voting on.
And that also seems to be, I guess, the concern that Councilman Dorsey raised at the beginning. I think he literally had the same problem.
Which is the updated document from the law department, from the four pages, that is going to include all of these.
I think Chairman Costello is saying he doesn't have the eight-page document that I've been working off of.
Yeah, I've got an 11-page document for Bill 0172, but again, it's an interlineated version of the bill. It's not, it's unclear which strike-throughs and which additions apply to which amendment number.
No, that's fine. I think the confusion is, there were several different versions, so we consolidated on one. It appears like the consolidated version, some members don't have all. So maybe let's just resend that email or send it all out. Right now, Director Thompson, if you could. And again, all the things that we sent to the council, if you could also send it to Nina Themelis, the mayor's Office of Government Relations, that way they have the same exact document that we're all working off of. And again, I think that that was the point that Councilman Dorsey was making earlier as well. So we're just going to take a couple minutes for it to go through everyone's firewalls and to get to you. Again, it's all amendments that you've seen before. We just have one consolidated document, so we can just go through them all together. When you get that document, two of the nine, we're not going to vote on today. We still have some things to work on. I believe it's amendment number two and amendment number four. We're going to walk you through each, through that.
Just sent.
Just received.
And Nina, you should have also been CC'd on that email as well. I see your comment.
This is the point where you wish you would have gone over the version number before you started to talk about the document. You think everybody's looking at the same document, and people are looking at three different documents. But it's also a testament to having a bill out there since November the 15th, and this being our seventh hearing on that bill, so. I got it.
So I'm prepared to go ahead in a second, but I want to go back to Councilmember Ramos's point in terms of medical debt. You're still trying to figure out what that number is going to be?
Yeah, we're not going to vote on that today. But we're still on the amendment one, we haven't
So I'll go ahead in a second.
So we're just giving everybody a chance to kind of look over the document, make sure they're comfortable with the one that was just sent out.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Dorsey?
And just to clarify, you said that you'd like to vote, I have eight amendments. You said you want to vote some of them, but not all of them. Which ones are you not intending to vote?
So the one that we talked about, I think Councilwoman Odette Ramos brought up the question, we're still trying to figure out the definition of the amount associated with the medical bill issue. And the other one was specific to the residency requirements. But we're going to vote all of them individually, so you know the ones that we're voting on. Then when we get to one that we're going to skip, we'll just talk about that we're skipping over and still working on, looking for any feedback or questions or concerns.
Sure, I mean, I just read through the one that we're looking at right now, I was trying to figure out which ones to look ahead to. Thank you.
Got it. So you got the two that I'm talking about, the one that Councilwoman Odette Ramos brought up?
I'm still trying to figure out whatever the second one is you're talking about. I know that Councilwoman Ramos was talking about amendment two. I'm trying to figure out.
I think it's listed as two and four.
Thank you.
Two and four.
Mr. President, if I may, while they're doing this, a little fun fact. You know, in the 50s and 60s, I guess most of the people in this council probably wasn't even thought about then. But I was a young girl growing up in the late 60s, and basically I graduated from high school in the early 70s. And I remember when that Highway to Nowhere basically, you know, came about, and at the beginning, it was really like a wake-up encouragement that this highway was going to go somewhere. And, you know, as time went by, it, African-American communities, that was like the beginning of when they started losing hope, because it really stripped through a large amount of communities. And I remember as a child, when that highway was not there, and driving through those streets and heading to places like the old Montgomery Wards, I mean, it was so thriving, that highway really cut, put a throat, cut, cut, I mean, it was just, it was devastating. So I just wanted to kind of give it a point. I just kind of had a flashback there. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I think we sent out the document. Everybody's working off of the same exact document. You know, the latest version that Director Thompson just went out. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that we pull a motion off the floor, and we just take a step back and go over it again. So we're all on the same page, and we have a flow of sequences relates to the amendments that are coming up. We're all working off the same document. We all see the same exact amendment, the way it's written out, and we are all on the same page. So I'm going to ask that, I guess it was Vice President Middleton, you pull your motion back from the floor? Do you accept to take it down, to move on?
Ooh, trying to, um, yes, I'll take it down and move on.
And that way, we can just start over, and we have a nice frequency and flow and sequence of this. We're all working off the same document that Councilman Dorsey, as well as Chairman Costello pointed to, out to us. So that being said, Director Thompson, if you could start over, just going over that first amendment, I know you just read it, but we'll read it again. And then we'll look for any questions, concerns, or unreadiness, and then we'll look to vote them out. Again, I believe it's two and four, we're not going to vote on today, but the others, we're planning on voting on today.
Yes, so to begin, amendment number one is on page one and line two, adding additional points to the preamble, and those are, as mentioned, a first reference to the Highway of Nowhere, and then number two, I'm going to mention in the preamble, whereas to the city's previous dollar program from the 1970s.
At this point, are there any questions or concerns? Any unreadiness? If not, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve this amendment.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second it, all those in favor, please say a, oh, no, we're going to do roll call. So Director Green, if you could call roll.
Council President Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Councilman Bullock?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Nay.
Councilman? Councilman Cohen, I'm not sure if he's I don't believe he's here.
I believe he's absent, Director.
Yes, okay. Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman, not sure if he's, Councilman Glover? I think he's here. I think he's absent. Councilman Schreifer? Councilman Schreifer?
His internet just went down.
Oh, okay. And I don't believe Councilwoman Porter is here either.
I think Schreifer just jumped back.
I just turned on my camera to get the bandwidth, I vote yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you, Councilman. And again, Councilwoman Porter. He's not here. So we have. Eleven yeas. One nay. And. Three absents.
Three absents. So amendment is approved. Director Thompson, if you could. Read the second amendment we're voting on tonight.
Yes, so the next amendment is actually amendment number three folded. On page five, strike the beginning with the colon, line nineteen. Down through and including the period in line thirty and substitute the language, the city owns the property. And has the authority to sale, sell the property, and this is specifically regarding the registry requirement based off of DHCD submitted report. They were already working on a registry and so this language removes those requirements for DHCD. To allow them the ability to use their existing procedures that they're working with to build out their own registry.
Are there any questions?
Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
Yes, Mister President, just to confirm, this is amendment number three. In the. Package that Director Thompson sent over at the top of page two, correct?
Correct.
And it, this language stops where it says amendment, before amendment number four, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you, Mister President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. I believe I cut you off. Madam Vice President?
I make a motion to approve amendment number three.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
President, I'm sorry, I have a question.
We have a question, Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah. For clarification. The way this reads, based on what it says to. Okay, so it's striking the colon and all the way down to the period and then it's just inserting this one line that was actually already in there. We're kind of deleting one line and then adding it back in. I think I understand it now, but I don't have a question, never mind.
No. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. There's a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded, we're going to go on a roll call, Director Green, if you could call a roll.
Council President Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Councilman Bullock?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman. Councilman Cohen, I believe is still absent. Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey?
Aye.
Councilman Stokes?
Yeah.
Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Glover is absent. Councilman Schreifer?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Porter is absent. Twelve yeas. Three absents.
Amendment is approved. Director Thompson, if you could read in the next amendment.
The next amendment is amendment number five. Which is on page seven in line twenty-eight and it is adding the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development approved. After the requirement for housing counseling, we previously had city approved, but wanted to. Elevate and have the United States Department of Housing, Urban Development approved, since those are different entities. And on that same page in line thirty, after necessary, we insert. Including authorized and applicable tax credits to focus the program on lower income in Baltimore City residents, more so to add that. An additional disclosure that when you are approved and deemed eligible, that you receive. As much information about all of your resources as possible. And while we had not necessarily determined which tax credits would be completely available. We did want to include that reference so that when the time comes, it is able to be included when an individual is deemed eligible.
At this point, are there any questions, concerns or unreadiness? Hearing and seeing none, I'll adjourn a motion.
So move.
So motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, I'm sorry, we're going to go to roll, so Director Green, if you could call a roll.
City Council President?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Councilman Bullock?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen is absent. Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes?
Yeah.
Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Glover, well, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Glover is absent. Councilman Schreifer? Councilman Schreifer?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Porter is absent. Twelve yeas, three absents.
Thank you, Director Green, that amendment is approved, Director Thompson, if you could go to the next amendment.
Amendment number six is mostly technical, it's on page eight. And it's a strike at the beginning, beginning with of in line seven, down through and including the period in line eleven. Substituting the language need to renovate or build the property. I mean, on that same page, line fifteen, after the word priority, we're inserting in the following order. And on page nine, we strike lines fifteen, fifteen through twenty-five. On that same page, strike beginning with A in line twenty-seven, down and through, including the period on line thirty-four. And on page ten, we strike line one in its entirety, and on that same page. On line two, we strike during and substitute during to be. On that same page, we should also, to be bank documents provided by, sorry, because we also strike list provided by. And this is to align with, as the Law Department already mentioned. Some of our original language was built around the concept of a lease, built around the concept of DHCD, DHCD having to do. Certain approvals that their office provided us in their report that they just do not have the capacity to do or is with, not within. Their current implementation that they're, that they would like to work on or they're in, they're in type of, their implementation best practices. So these are technical to try to align as much as possible with which DHCD already administers.
Are there any questions, concerns or unreadiness around this amendment? Hearing none, at this point, I entertain a motion.
So move.
So motion on the floor, it's been properly, is it moved and properly seconded, Director Green, if you could roll call.
Council President, who seconded it? I didn't get that, who seconded it?
It was.
Yes, Middleton.
By Stokes and seconded by Middleton.
Okay. City Council President Mosby?
Aye.
Council President Middleton?
Aye.
Councilman Bullock?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen is absent? Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yeah.
Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Glover is absent? Councilman Schreifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter is absent. So that should be. Twelve yeas. Three absents.
Thank you, Director Green, this amendment is approved, Director Thompson, if we can go to the next amendment.
Amendment number seven on page ten. Strikes lines twelve through eighteen in their entirety and on the same page, it strikes F. In line nineteen to substitute E on that same page. The strike beginning with the first the in line twenty-five, down through and including complete in line twenty-six. In order to substitute language that requires that the participant has received a certificate of occupancy. Or a temporary certificate of occupancy as described in section eleven of the city building code.
Are there any questions, concerns or unreadiness?
I'm sorry, I got lost, I thought we were on amendment seven.
We are on seven.
That says on page nine and line ten, strike at the cost of a dollar a year.
We already struck that language in the last amendment, I'm working off the most recent document that I just sent around.
Yeah, Councilwoman Ramos, we we wanted to, everyone to be on the same document because we know that there's so many that are out there, so we set one around. That was the confusion that Councilman Dorsey brought up to us and then we worked out with Chairman Costello. So we're working on that last document that was just sent out, it's only four pages. I believe the one you're looking at is like eight or nine pages. And that's the one I was originally referring to.
I was looking at the document that was sent out right before the hearing, but I'll, I'll go back to what Director Thompson sent us, thank you, sorry about that.
I was doing the same thing, Councilwoman Ramos. Same page. So are there any other additional questions or concerns? Unreadiness, hearing none, seeing none?
Sorry, I'm, I think I was looking at the wrong one too, can we, can we redo it one more time?
It's, it's all good, it's, we were paid attention, Director, so we just sent out that four page before we started to vote again. To ensure we're all looking at that same document. And Director Thompson, just for clarity of everyone who's opening a document, just go over that amendment one more time.
You're on mute.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Amendment number seven on page ten, we're striking lines twelve through eighteen in their entirities. And on that same page, we're striking F in line nineteen to substitute E. And on that same page, strike beginning with the first the in line twenty-five, down through and including complete in line twenty-six. To substitute this with this language, which is the participant has received a certificate of occupancy. Or a temporary certificate of occupancy as described in section one eleven of the Baltimore City Building Code.
Mister President, I'm sorry, the, the, the page that the Director sent us just now is not the same as the Law Department technical amendments. So just want to make sure, I'm sorry about this.
No, that's why we're working through this, so what, what are you pointing out?
Law Department's technical amendments had all these highlights on it and that's what I thought we were trying to work on today.
Yeah, that's the document that we, we decided to push to the side to just work off this, this document, this is the latest and, and greatest.
Mister President, this is Victor, I, I don't know if I have what you guys are working off of, so could Nikki, please send that to me as well?
I've sent it to you, Victor.
Thank you.
And I think Nina also sent it around to all the administration as well.
So the language that the Law Department wanted under the recapture piece is. Not on here.
Okay, that was the recapture?
The recapture language is in amendment number eight. On the new document that was sent. So there's no longer an amendment number nine, which I think the, yeah.
Page three. Councilwoman Ramos.
This is Victor again, that recapture language doesn't contain all of the provisions that were in the Law Department's amendment. And I think we, if we're at the bottom of the amendments, we skipped two of mine.
Two and four. Because for two, we don't have the medical debt totaling?
Two, two's good for me and four, I understand because, well, four, I understand because I understand what that one is.
Yeah, they're the two that we skipped.
There was language about what is now currently, I think what is currently in the bill now is a one dollar fee for rental and that. If that's, I don't think you voted on that, I don't see it in the. In the document that Nikki just.
That's what I had noticed too, Mister President.
And there's another one too, that was in my original package, that's not listed in here as well. That no one had a problem with. And I was aware of.
Understood.
And that was, do you go, Nikki, if you go to the. To the draft that we sent around that had the Law Department's stuff in it, and I'm, I'm missing amendment number seven from the Law Department's draft that we were talking about earlier.
That's, that's the larger one, that's the eight or nine page one?
That was a four-page document that we, you guys had at the beginning of this show. And so I'm.
Yeah, it was sent right before the meeting.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm missing amendment seven, eight of that document and the recapture provisions that are now, that are on my number nine. Are not fully. Reflected in the document that I just received from Nikki a few minutes ago.
Nikki, do you see the discrepancy between those two?
I see, I see the differences, which is why we didn't, I didn't vote the one, we didn't go over the ones with the differences because. So the original document that was sent out by Director Green this afternoon, it seemed like everyone didn't have that one. So I sent out the four-page document that was the most, that seemed to be the last one that everyone was. Everyone had received.
Yeah, Victor, at this point, we don't have any concerns with it, but we want to provide. Folks, I guess, an opportunity to digest it and we can vote it out on Wednesday. folks, I guess, an opportunity to digest it and we can vote it out on Wednesday.
I'd be delighted by that. I just want to make sure that, that something's being lost, uh, in this translation here.
No, 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 I, I appreciate that. Um, sorry, I think the issue is, I think, uh, Chairman Costello said earlier, it's just so many documents because there's been so many different versions and so many different hands. I mean, we've been doing this since November the, the fifteenth, so I, I get it. Um.
I would just, I would just, I would just caution, don't, don't vote the recapture language that you see on Nikki's document. It, mine's different.
Okay, you still have some issues with that.
Yeah, we, we strained it out in the, in the, in the draft that you saw earlier, but, but it's.
Got it.
Here, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that we weren't voting on the version that the Law Department sent out. And then that we were going to add the Law Department's amendments later.
Well, we, we voted on some of the Law Department amendments already.
Right.
But there were some that didn't get included in, in this time and we, we talked at the beginning, we were, we'll vote them on Wednesday, so. Again, I think that, that, that the concern, the question, and we'll make sure that we address that going into next meeting, is we're all going to have the same document with the same version number before we start and we'll all be on the same page. So. So charge that to me. But it's a lot of different documents out there. I, I get it. Um, so there is an amendment on the table. Um, we haven't gone to a motion or second it yet. I'm going to ask you to read over that again, Director Thompson, just to ensure everyone's on the same page. Uh, and then we'll look to either raise any questions or concerns or move for a vote. So just, if you could go over the, the, the last one.
For amendment number seven, we on page ten and we are striking lines twelve through eighteen in their entirety and on the same page, striking F in line nineteen to substitute E. And on that same page, I'm striking beginning with the first the in line twenty-five down through and including complete in line twenty-six in order to substitute the language, the participant has received a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy as described in section one eleven of the Baltimore City Building Code.
Are there any questions or concerns regarding that amendment? It's an amendment that we worked on directly with Department of Housing and Community Development. Hearing and seeing no questions, concerns or any unreadiness, we will go to vote. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve amendment number seven of the most recent document that we have.
So we have a motion, is there a second? It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please, I'm sorry, keep doing that. Just used to that repetitive, that's a muscle memory. Uh, so, um.
That was seconded by Stokes, again, Councilman Stokes again?
Yes, Director Green. So we're going to vote.
All right. City Council President Mosby.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen is absent. Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yeah.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Glover, absent. Councilman Schreifer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter, absent. Twelve to thirteen. No, excuse me, twelve to three, I'm sorry.
Let's say we, we gained some members. Thank you, uh, Director Green for that. Um, at this point, Director Thompson, uh, that, that amendment is, is, is passed, is approved. Uh, Director Thompson, if you could go into the, the next amendment.
That's our last amendment.
Got it, that's our last amendment. At this point, are there any additional amendments or questions or concerns to bring up tonight? So again, like we discussed earlier, I guess the strategy is some of the amendments that the Law Department presented to us today, everybody will have that. What we're going to do, so everyone's clear, we're going to compile the amendments that were passed tonight on one document. And the remaining amendments that we talked about, that we decided not to vote on, that we have still open on the floor, we're going to put that in a separate document. And we're going to number the document. That way, when we come back on Wednesday, we'll know all the amendments that we have already voted out, but we still will know the amendments that are on the table that either we're going to vote out or have more discussion, dialogue too, all right? And we'll make sure that everybody has that in enough time prior to Wednesday meeting. With that said, uh, are there any questions, concerns, additional amendments or anything to bring up at this time for members of the council? Hearing and seeing none, uh, the administration, is there any questions, concerns or items to bring up at this time? Hearing and seeing none, thank you for wa- wa- walking through that very arduous back and forth between all the different documents, but we finally got there. Again, we're going to clean it up, uh, in, on Wednesday to ensure that we're all on the same page with the same document uh, once we get the train rolling. So again, thank you for your time. Look forward to, um, seeing everybody on Wednesday. The meeting is adjourned.